Sorry. Good evening, everyone. I'm Elizabeth Bonbright and I am acting in this capacity as president today since President Andrea Cobb is out with a family emergency. So today we're having a study session and I'd like to call the study session to order. We don't, let's see. So our first item on the study session is our legislative agenda. So I will, Superintendent, will you please take us through that process?
Yes, I'm going to ask Dr. Garcia to lead us through the legislative process. He and Director Keating, and we really invite Charlie Brown, who works with us, works on our behalf in Olympia. Thanks for coming, Charlie. We're glad to have you here. Give a wave so we know who you are. Okay, thank you. So I'll turn it over to you to Dr. Garcia.
And I have the amazing luxury to turn it over to Director Keating for any opening comments. But we'll bring up the slideshow to start with in the context. And actually, Director Keating and I are both going to just dive right in with Charlie. And Charlie's going to walk us through a draft of what we're presenting to you as potential legislative updates. And so we're going to turn it to Charlie and Charlie will walk us through those. And then Director Keating and I will be here to provide some guidance and support unless Director Keating has any other opening comments that she'd like to make.
Nope, I'd love to pass it off to Charlie.
All right. Go ahead, Charlie. And then Charlie, you just have to say next slide for the team to help us through.
Okay, well, thank you. Thank you, everybody, for inviting me to the meeting. I do appreciate it. And I look forward to this conversation. This is quite the year. And I think that a lot of the stuff that you will be seeing in these next several slides are directly related to the issues that you all have been dealing with in the last seven months since this pandemic really has taken hold. So we can go to the first slide if we could, to the next slide, I guess. Over the years, what we've done is we structured this in a way that has two different pieces. One is critical district issues and then the other piece is really high priority issues. And part of the reason for doing that is that it creates an opportunity to be able to say, hey, here's our top couple of issues for the district as we move forward through this upcoming school year for you, the legislature, to consider. And then the remaining issues are really high priority issues that where the opportunity presents itself, we can certainly jump in. And there's a lot of other issues that certainly come up during the legislative session. This document is not intended to be a full scope document like the school director's legislative document is. It wouldn't make a lot of sense, I think, to try and walk through and anticipate what every issue is out there. But this just gives you guys, you all, the opportunity as a board to say, these are the issues that we feel like we really need to focus on. And hopefully it's issues that the legislators then will take into consideration as they're making policy in each of the legislative sessions. The school enrollment funding stability, I think, is the, we've got it as the number one issue. These aren't intended to be numbered, but this is the first issue that is up here. And you're going to find that the top issues in this critical issue is related to funding. So the 2021 school years like no other, obviously because of the pandemic. Given that families have, you know, made decisions whether they're going to enroll their children in some of the online learning or other activities of school district, not knowing what that school year was going to look like. Certainly, the district is already set to, with the number of staff and every, all the support to provide education. And then comes along September, we realized we're really not going to be able to do a hybrid model or to bring all the students back to school. But we still have those costs. And so what we're asking the legislature to do here is to provide the enrollment funding stability and essentially keep our funding for the school district at as high a level as possible. When this was developed, we weren't sure exactly what that drop off in enrollment was going to be. So you'll note there that the student enrollment payment reductions should be capped at no more than 3% of the previous school year. The idea being there that we would have an absolute floor under which we would not go. I don't know that that piece has to be in there anymore, but I do think that it's valuable to have a statement of that sort in there so that when working with the legislature, there's some acknowledgement of the $4.5 billion budget deficit problem that they are going to be facing in the upcoming legislature, you know, that we're willing to acknowledge. There is some, there is some need to be flexible on some of this stuff. So that was where that 3% piece came in. So I'd be happy to walk through more of that. On the student transportation funding formula revision, this is a pretty straightforward piece. I think you all know the challenges we had in school transportation funding. Hopefully, the governor has put out the order that said, we're going to keep the funding steady. We've got legislators who have indicated a willingness to pass some legislation early in the session that would allow the student transportation funding formula to continue to be paid to the district as it was in the February 2019 student count for transportation. The idea being that we maintain a transportation system that's viable in the event, number one, that we're able to bring our students back to school. We can call up the school buses and get the kids to the schools. But number two, to also make sure that while we're in this period of bringing the schools to the children rather than the children to the schools, that we're able to maintain the funding and the ability to do that. So that's the student transportation fund, funding formula revision. The next slide. Daycare services, support for the whole child. The district has actually been one of the leaders, I think, among school districts around the state of trying to partner with our community organizations to provide daycare and childcare services for our students. We recognized early on that a number of families were going to be required to be working. We have a number of essential workers, of course, families, you know, that we serve. And so what we're wanting to do is get the legislature to allow for priority grant making through whichever agency they're using it, or even the governor's office with some of the Federal Cares Act money to allow community partners to provide the support and enhanced learning for our students between three and six and other non-school hours. Next, the prototypical school model funding flexibility. So this is another area where what we're asking the legislature to do is provide a little bit more flexibility. None of these statutes were ever, were developed with an eye toward the kind of pandemic that we are in today. The situation is just so dramatically different than what lawmakers were thinking about when they put these together. We may have needs in areas for funding and to move some people over there during this pandemic timeframe that are not contemplated in the prototypical school model. We're asking for the funding flexibility. And quite frankly, that funding flexibility, if we can get it in the longer run, would be helpful to the district because certainly each district is different and we may or may not have more McKinney-Bento type student support requirements than other districts. If we do have them, we'd be able to move that money over to those areas. Certainly, the nurses and IEP supports as we work through this period is important. So asking for more funding flexibility certainly makes it easier for the district to tailor an education program that is unique to the demographics of our school district. Next, so now we're going into the issues of the high concern. The special education funding continues to be an area where the legislature does not fully fund districts like Tacoma. Given the funding formulas that they use for special education, we continue to believe that special education is basic education and the legislature should fully fund special education. I, my recollection is that the, the, at least for previous years, the funding shortfall has been in the $7 million range, which means that you have to take that out of the local levy funding that collects from our voters. And that, we just think that the legislature ought to step up and fully fund special education. Next issue. The school employee benefits board. Many of you may recall that a couple of years ago, the legislature created a school employee benefits board. It was designed to provide healthcare and other benefits to the staff, the state funded staff. That requirement also extends to locally funded staff that the, that the district hires. And the overall cost of these new benefits are higher than what they were previously. And the legislature has not stepped up to increase funding and recognize that additional cost for the school district. So what we're asking for here is essentially that that delta between what was being provided or what school districts were paying for school employee benefits and what the legislature is now mandating, that the legislature fill that, fill that difference, pay for that difference. So it's a, it's a very expensive piece of the budget for all of you. And certainly, this is an issue that transcends all school districts throughout the state of Washington. So the next issue. Dual credit and college and the high school. Tacoma has again been one of the leaders, I believe, in, in working on issues of this nature. The idea being that if, you know, students are getting a college level education while they're still in the school district, the high school setting, that we should be able to provide these students with that opportunity to gain those college credits and quite frankly, not have those costs placed upon the students in our district. If they're getting that education, those ought to transfer directly over to the value, that those credits ought to transfer over on the transcripts for colleges. It has a long run benefit for the students, of course, of lowering their college tuition costs if they choose to go on to college. And certainly, I think that for the state, it would have a, a benefit in the funding through the, through the various programs the state has for higher education tuition grants. So it's one we will continue to work on, especially given Tacoma's focus on trying to provide the highest and best education to students that is possible, is possible.
Charlie, can I just add a comment to this?
Yeah.
Um, that I think that the thing that is important to keep in mind is that this is an equity issue, an equity, equity and access issue. And it's, it's taken me some time to learn what dual credit and college and the high school means. So Josh, can you talk a little bit more about, particularly for those that might be watching tonight? Can you talk a little bit about what this means for those that may not understand?
Yeah, and so right now, the current college and the high school program is, allows families to, if their student is enrolled in a college and the high school, to purchase, earn up to five college credits. And what we're wanting to do is to remove that barrier. There are model states like Utah that have limited that cost to make it more affordable to all families. Because the current five car, credit cost is a burden that local school districts can't support as well as many families can't support in there. And so this would lower that tuition cost because the current high school staff is teaching those things. It's really a transcripting cost at that point that would allow that. And then we would be able to implement programs where kids could earn college credits inside of the normal high school year and be able to provide a sustainable funding source to support those types of programs. In addition to, there's currently options like running starts. So it would be in addition to that, it would be different than there. Right now, the state has a grant opportunity, but it's only available to school districts that are 20 miles away from a university. And unfortunately, we are not, we are 20 miles within, although we have some other added values by being that close to our university partners. And so it's, it allows them to stay, students, they being staying on our campuses, working with our teachers who have the proper credentials to earn college credit while they're attending the classes. And then my final comment is, is any student that's currently in this program and if they can't afford the, or the college tuition, they can still have a transcript as a college and the high school class, even though they don't get the credits for it, the college credits, they get the high school credits.
Thank you, Josh.
Thank you, Charlie. Go ahead.
Okay, so the next issue. Simple majority for school construction bonds. I think that all of you are aware that school construction bond votes at the local level currently require a 60% super majority to pass. And it's a constitutional provision that was put into place in the mid 1900s. It makes it very difficult for a lot of school districts to be able to pass bonds. Certainly Tacoma voters have stepped up and been very supportive of the proposals put forward by Tacoma School District over the years. But there, those getting that 60% super majority is a very difficult threshold to overcome. So we are continuing to support the idea of a constitutional amendment to allow for a simple majority for school construction bonds. That would be similar to the simple majority requirements that we have for our local levies that help support our operational funds for the school district. So it's an issue that continues to move forward. And, and, and you'll see there in the strategic plan alignment, safety, academic excellence and equity and racial justice. So. And then the next, if there is one, I guess I have lost track of where there was, oh, thank you. The early learning funding. The Tacoma School District, you know, provides expanded early learning funding. We'd like to increase state funding for early learning programs to provide direct funding to school districts for early learning as we move forward. I think we all are recognizing here that the earlier that we can capture students and get them prepared for kindergarten, being kindergarten ready and first grade ready, the more likely their chances of success throughout the 12 years of their educational experience is going to be. So the more we can invest in early learning, the better off we will be. So. And then, is that the last?
There's one more. It's the instruction.
The school construction formula modifications, interestingly, well, the formula hasn't been changed since 2005. Here we are in 2020 and going into 2021. There obviously have been costs, increased costs for construction over those 15 years. And we continue to ask the legislature to increase the square foot per student ratios that the state matches as well as the area cost allowance ratios. And what that does is allows for the district to receive more funding from the state, which then, of course, allows us to build more facilities for our students and actually keep up with the changing needs in our school buildings for the educational services that we provide to our students and the facilities, the quality of the facilities for our staff as well as our students. So the more we can get into school construction formula modifications, the better off we are.
Thank you, Charlie. I'm going to see Dr. and Dr. Director Keating. Do you have any overarching comments you want to make? And if not, you can start with your comments about the, these and we'll input on these.
I have a couple of comments, but a clarifying question regarding the, the first priority around student enrollment stability, funding stability. So in the solution, there, when it talks about, there's the cap, the 3% cap. I just want to make, is clarify, there is currently no cap on a drop in enrollment to protect funding now, or is there?
There is no floor, that that is correct. So that there, there's no cap, as it would be called. So there's no floor under which, you know, we would go depending on what your enrollment would be. So this, this would be new policy. The, the whole idea behind this is that we want to be able to maintain the stability in the funding for the school district because we're basically locked into a budget for the remainder of the school year. And this pandemic has thrown so many curveballs at us. We're using the funding that we've got in order to, to really change and create new ways of delivering education to the students where they're at, rather than bringing the students to the school. So we're asking for funding stability there.
And then, oh, yeah. The other thing I wanted to say around special ed and IDEA. So the, so in my mind, that also would include advocacy at the federal level since the federal level, there's no funding allocation from the Department of Education, correct? For special ed services?
We get federal money for special education through IDEA. And then there's, so this would be our state legislative agenda. And then we would use this also to link priorities at our federal level, Director Keating, as well.
Okay, thank you for that. You're muted, Elizabeth.
Dr. Garcia, you have, you have your hand raised. So do you have a comment that you want to?
Yeah, just a real quick overarching comment for all those folks at home. These are, if you will, our beacon priorities. These are not the only things that we will be working to, to advocate for during the session. We all know that there are new bills that come up all the time. And so Mr. Brown works with Director Keating and the staff to then analyze those, what is in alignment with our strategic plan, your values and your beliefs. And so I just want folks to know that this will not be our only topics that we will be searching for during the legislative session. But this becomes the places that we know we need to move the needle in these areas. And so we want to make sure that there's a strong grounding statements in those areas. So I just wanted folks to know that.
Thank you, Deputy Superintendent. Dr. Leon, do you have some input on the legislative agenda or questions?
No specific questions right now. I just want to echo a little bit of what Director Keating always already said. But we've got several priorities within that we're using as anchors here, specifically safety, equity, early learning, academic excellence too. But the, kind of the safety and equity pieces and early learning are really such prime base building structures for improving the, the health and education of our students and our staff. That's why all of these encompass many parts of those. While they're all important, I think, you know, specifically giving, drawing a little bit more attention to the student enrollment, the flexibility around the student enrollment. Because at this point, as you said, there's no bottom to how much money the school can lose. So we'd like to try to get a cap on that so we can have stability. The daycare benefits in a, in a way to really support these families that don't have their kids in school. And when they get to school, basically their, their home, their jobs are so disrupted with the pandemic that having stability around that will not only help the kids' education, but also their, their financial situation when they're able to get back to a normal site, a part of work. The special education funding is amazing that it's not funded, you know, fully like it, it hasn't been ever. So it's something we've got to keep fighting for. So, yeah, there's, they're all, those are just some of the pieces that I feel really strongly about. Of course, they're all important. The flexibility to either pay more or hire more with regard to nurses, counselors. While all of our staff are important, we're feeling the pinch and the trauma. And we're seeing it in the medical world at my, at my day job here of anxiety and stress on the teens, kids, young adults, of course, all, all people. But those young folks, when they start feeling that, that stress and anxiety early, and we can't have an impact on that as a, as a health system, but also as a school system, then those catecholamine and adrenaline receptors get amped up in a way that's hard to turn them off the rest of their life. And they suffer and die from heart attacks and strokes much earlier down the line. So while people don't think about what happens early age affecting your life for the rest of your, affecting your health for the rest of your life, it does happen, there's, there's, there's science behind that. So these are so important. So thank you for helping us bring these to the legislature.
Okay, well, as I mentioned earlier, Director Cobb sent me some her thoughts on these. And she actually has some specific ones. So, so Charlie, I don't know if you have a copy in front of you, but I'll, she has two points. She just generally agrees with the direction we're headed and has two points for feedback. One is, has to do with the prototypical school funding model. And she wants to change the sentence that reads, "at least for high priority school districts whose students require additional support," which I think is very, okay. Wrap around. Two, she wants to say, "at least for high poverty school districts who need to respond to a greater diversity of student need." Because she, she feels that framing it like this takes the problem away from the students and positions it with the challenge the district faces with meeting needs of every student every day. And actually, I agree with her. I think that taking it, you know, it's not about the student, it's about our ability to serve the students. So if you, I don't know if somebody jotted that down, but I can, I can get it to you if you would like.
If you'd like to, that'd be great.
And then the second comment that Director Cobb submitted was one around school construction formula modifications. And she says that to consider a complementary proposal to ask the state to establish a minimum operational maintenance, which is for custodial grounds, you know, et cetera, standard, so a maintenance standard, and to fund staffing accordingly through the prototypical funding model. She says adequate funding for cleaning has always been needed, but COVID has raised the stakes on this issue. So even though in the description, it says, you know, the custodians are listed as one of the items, I think she's wanting to call it out and have it a minimum operational maintenance, a category versus just, to look at it differently because I think the, she's pointing out that the, the need is different. So that's a recommendation. Okay, so from, from my, my comments, I think, echo a lot of what the other directors have already mentioned. I think what I'm noting from here, in an, in an upcoming year when the legislature is going to be faced with some major budget decisions and we are all hoping beyond hope that the basic ed funding and our general funding will be maintained. A lot of these are funding. A lot of these are funding related, and I and I and I think that's a huge ask at this time. So I know that these are we and those are critical. But I think knowing that it's going to be a push to get the budget ones through, I want to make sure that we're really pushing on the ones that are policy-related, that we can, you know, get through than aren't as intensely funding dependent like the daycare services support for the whole child where we would have the availability to contract out. I know there'd be needed money for that, but and also looking at the, well, see all of these, they're so the dual high college credit in the high school, I know that's a funding one as well, but it's also a policy related. And and the early learning funding, some of these are more, you know, hopefully might not get as stuck in the fiscal committee. I think we can push on two levels, policy committee and fiscal committee, and I know you do that already. So thank you for that. I think that these are strong. And interestingly, they are aligned with the WASDA, the Washington State School Directors Association priorities. They're very aligned. So that's what I think what's you're gonna also have a lot of colleagues from across the state that are going to be asking for similar kinds of kinds of things. So I appreciate the the input. Does anybody have any any other thoughts to add about this? Or Deputy Superintendent Garcia?
Yeah, so just next steps, we would take the as a team, we can take the two feedbacks that Director Cobb passed. Any other feedbacks that you may have after tonight? Director Keating and Mr. Brown and the superintendent myself, we will cross-reference those. And then we will bring them back to you in as a formal adoption process at a future board business meeting. And at that point, if you choose to adopt the fed or excuse me, the formal legislative agenda, then we would then move into education with our legislators that these are our priorities. We were simultaneously working with folks at WASDA as Director Keating and Director Bonbright have already started some of that work. But Director Keating is deeply involved in there. And then also with our other neighboring districts and colleagues. And so Mr. Brown's RCD started to build some capacity with other communities to say, is this something that you're also seeing? Because the goal is is to bring a greater awareness. So that would be our next steps. Send us any of that specific feedback. And then we would bring you likely a first reading or a final recommendation for you to consider in a formal business meeting to adopt.
And so what is your recommendation on timing for that? I'm just thinking about how many meetings we have before we want to start meeting with legislators probably fairly soon. So Charlie, did you have thoughts on that in terms of how soon you need this?
I think that if you can get this adopted by mid to late November, we should be in good shape. Our hope is to have a some Zoom meetings, virtual meetings with legislators later in November, early December timeframe, and be able to bring this forward. And then certainly we'll be continuing to discuss these general issues when we have the opportunity. But as a formal document, if you could have this put together and adopted by mid-November timeframe, that would be terrific.
And if you folks are comfortable, based on what I've heard tonight, there seems to be some synergy in adding the two with the two comments that were made by Director Cobb, I saw some heads nods. And obviously, we're not taking any formal action tonight to make some of those adjustments. If you if you like, we could bring you the to your your next business meeting in October.
What I would just add to that, the time moves really quickly. And the legislative session is going to be on us faster than we probably realize. So I think that if we can do this sooner, then I then I think it's in our best interest because sometimes time is more time is helpful.
That's right. I agree. So if there's a few, I will forward you the comments from Director Cobb as soon as we get off the call tonight. And then hopefully, we can have this in in front of us in a more solidified way. So Director Leon, Director Keating, if you have more comments, additional comments, submit them in the next day or so. And then the team can bring it back to us for about on the 22nd. Is everyone good with that? Super. Thank you very much, Charlie, for coming and thank your team for all the hard work. Appreciate it. Look forward to another productive year working with you. And thank you to Director Keating for all the hard work she's been doing on as legislative rep. Boy, it's been it's a big job and she's been doing a fabulous job. So thank you for your hard work.
You're welcome. Thank you, Charlie.
Thank you all. Have a good evening. Thank you.
All right, moving on. Our next agenda item is priority benchmarks. And as a bit of background, I'm going to turn it over to the superintendent who will tell us or the deputy superintendent, whoever wants to tell us that kind of what's the difference between, you know, the benchmark and how the benchmarks work and where we are in the process? And then we can talk about moving forward.
Thank you. So just for a little background, we first the board first adopted the first board goals in 2011 and then developed benchmarks in the fall of 2012. And then we've updated those goals and benchmarks three times since 2012. So what I think is so great about the process that you use and that you've that you've endorsed and followed is that we set these big, you know, who calls them the big hairy audacious goals? And then, you know, we set those and then we have benchmarks, which really are those action steps that help us really attain and get to those goals. And so those and then above that are the priority benchmarks that say, hey, these are the ones that we think are the most important. And so the document, the document that you have, which is just going over your five goals and then your five sets of benchmarks are really a labor of love from all the staff and especially from strong direction from Dr. Garcia, who, you know, who's the one who keeps the, not the whip, but the noodle going so that everybody keeps moving to get those done. So really appreciate it and couldn't get it done without them. We report publicly about benchmarks. And in 2015, that's when we established the priority benchmarks as the way to focus and have a deeper conversation about those. And then we have a monitoring report and a summary report. So I think it's the best way when you talk about setting a goal and get, you know, increasing the potential that you're actually going to get there, it's measuring. Now, all the time, we know that when we set goals personally for budgets or whatever, that there's always something that can step in and kind of interrupt that. We've seen evidence of big interruption this year. And we know that the challenges with COVID have interrupted and that actually we, you know, you're you had difficulty with evaluating, I mean, we had difficulty evaluating accomplishment or measuring accomplishment because, you know, that March 16th, everybody go to your house really interrupted our idea, our ability to get some of that data. But we embrace that the goals that you set are important. I think that Rosalind and I had a conversation today. And, you know, I think that Elizabeth is involved in an effort with J Mac and it's you and Andrea. And then I'm involved in an effort with Metro Parks, the city, the port and the library. Where we're really coming together and trying to make sure that we have an equity agenda that sticks and that we're holding each other accountable. And so I think one of the main lenses that we can have on this agenda this year is, you know, does it have the ability to decrease that gap between, you know, what are between all of our students? And also, does it going to increase access to, you know, to what, you know, we all have? And Director Leon, I thought it was important what you said about that every one of the things, every one of the goals on these priority goal, I mean, on this goal sheet are important. But we set priorities so that we have some place to be the beacon, you know, to make sure that we look at them. But it doesn't decrease that. When you select your priority benchmarks, and that's the action that we're asking you to consider today, doesn't mean you have to decide, but to discuss that. And we're bringing recommendations for those priority benchmarks. But it should follow your goals and your three goals, social, emotional, wellbeing, equity and racial justice and engagement and partnership. So those are the three board, three goals that the the board set. And so our recommendations are to take those benchmarks that you have and to look at the content and the, you know, for each one of them. And we'll set the measurement goals and then to take a make a priority goal for each one. And of course, they're just suggestions and you may discuss at the end of this meeting and want to really look at something different. That's your prerogative. And again, it doesn't mean, you know, we track and we use KPIs, key progress indicators in all of our departments to track the data. So it's not that they get lost and that people only pay attention to the priority benchmarks. Everybody looks at all of them. One of the things that's important about, you know, doing a benchmark and doing the measurement and doing the monitoring is that you make mid-course corrections if you need to. And you say, okay, this isn't going to work. We need to change and look at a different, you know, a different measuring tool. My guess is that we're going to face that as we go through this year because there's such a lack of predictability about exactly, you know, what we're going to do. But and this staff and our leadership team will really work together with our principals and with, you know, representation to make sure that we get good ways to measure the goals. I don't know. Josh, do you want to add anything to process anything that we've been through?
No, I think Superintendent, you did a great job of kicking us off for a discussion. And so at this point, you know, we can either share with you some staff recommendations to consider or at this point, we could just turn it over to you and you guys can have that discussion.
Thank you. Well, I think we do want to hear staff recommendations. But before I think another point that I think I don't think you mentioned, Superintendent, but is kind of key is that we just finished a five-year strategic plan. And we're beginning, we're beginning a new five-year strategic plan. And that these goals and benchmarks are, while they're connected to the ones we've that have come before them, they've also tailored towards this next strategic plan that we are moving forward to 2020 to 2025. So we're at the beginning of that process. So the goals and equity is a huge goal for our for us as a team, as an organization and as a community. So I think that that's critical. So Director Leon or Director Keating, do you have anything to add before we have the presentation from the team? Okay, so.
One thing that you said, Elizabeth, that triggered something else I should have said, which was real important, is that we do, I think it's important for our public to know that we don't just sit down at the table and come up with these on our own, but that we have a huge accordion process where we gather feedback. So this has gone out to any our major community groups. I don't know, Dr. Garcia, you're the one who kind of sends out the lesson. But it's like, you know, we ask for feedback from our community to make sure that we're on the right track. So it's not that we're just doing it in a in a vacuum. And as you look at, I think the city is involved right now and engaged in strategic planning and the foundation for Tacoma students, lots of people are doing this. And they look to Tacoma to find out, you know, what our direction is so they can make sure they're aligned. That's what's good about having strategic partners. I don't know, Dr. Garcia, anything else?
No, I just added real quickly that the P I O team during COVID really worked hard to do some surveys. So families, students and staff and then those community partners, we invite to those. So Vice President Bonbright, you did an amazing job of remembering all of us are we just adopted these in May. These are new benchmarks. And so the process tonight would be is is to give you a chance to actually think about what are your priority benchmarks? At some point, we would bring those back for a formal adoption as well. And then from there, we would set baseline data, establish baseline data for those priority benchmarks as well as the other benchmarks that we have and set some goals for those priority benchmarks. So what would you like to see as reasonable increases?
So let me let let me just give you the beginning recommendations. And again, so we took each one of those five goals, academic achievement, partnership, early learning, health and safety and operations, and came up with and, you know, really worked on what would be a strategic benchmark for each one. And we have a rationale behind each one, but that doesn't mean that there couldn't be others and that you might. You've had a course of conversations. I've been real impressed with the way you dug into these different, you know, into these different topics and through your committee of the whole and your study sessions and your business meetings. You've had a chance to discuss a lot of these. So we won't, you know, we won't be surprised if you if you want to look at other things. And again, you know, my caution is that it usually what happens, and it happens in our staff meetings too, is that, you know, everybody says, oh, well, we have to do this and we have to do that and we have to do this. And it goes back again to what you said and what, you know, what you articulated and what Director Leon articulated today is that, yeah, there's lots of important things, but the priority benchmark is to set, you know, one priority that you want to go forward with. Okay? Okay, so for academic achievement, you see that there's a list of grade levels and graduation goals and life after high school and readiness. We think that one of the things that we just really need to focus on and make sure that we have a benchmark for is math. Because we feel like the, you know, our our gap in math is wider than any of those other gaps. And we're making progress with many of those. But what we'd really like to do is have a goal that sets the student scoring at each level of a state assessment, the percent of students scoring proficient at each one of those state assessments in math. And then again, it's in all those grades that are listed in the strategic plan. And that we also, one of the things I am proud about in our benchmarks is we consider, you know, we have those disaggregated by, you know, by race and by gender and, you know, by lots of factors so that we can look at it and really analyze that gap. I don't know, Director Bonbright, do you want me to discuss them as we go through? Or do you want me just to go ahead and go through them?
I'm thinking maybe it's maybe we should, I don't want to run out of time. So either we can look at doing.
They're pretty brief.
Okay, let's go through them all. Let's go through them all and then each person can speak to the ones that they want to address.
Okay, partnerships. We really want to look at the number of community-based and youth-based organizations in formal partnerships with our schools and our school district. You've talked a lot this year about our youth and how important it is to make sure that they are in that we're in strong that we're in strong, strong cooperation with our youth-based organizations. I've been in I've given several, you know, informational talks about COVID and the effects this year. And one of the things I've made clear every time is that it was our relationship with ACT6 and the Achievers and the College Success Network and, you know, all these partners that keep track of our youth that were that enabled us to engage kids in different levels and make sure we brought them together. So we think that that's really important and that if we involve those community-based partnerships, you know, we talked about how the evidence of the evidence of poverty really was illuminated when we got into this COVID crisis. Because, you know, some of the typical things we use at school to make sure that we engage and keep track of kids, our students got beyond that. And so the partnerships were real important. So we thought that that was good. For early learning, you know, one of the things that's happened is because, you know, Tacoma, we need to remind the public often that Tacoma is one of the few school districts that has preschool programs that are, you know, that are funded through our, you know, through our own funding mechanism and not just E Cap or Head Start. And this year with the funding differences with the COVID interruption, we know this is one that we're going to have to start a new base. I don't want I don't want to let that go. I think we need to let our preschools and we need to look at our preschools. So what we want is we really want that count. And you guys asked good questions about, you know, what are the impacts and the factors and those things that impact our students when we decrease that number of, you know, that number of preschool students decreases? So we want to have a benchmark, priority benchmark that is about building the number of students served in preschool program. And of course, we're going to have to, you know, that's one of the things we're going to have to realign the data because it's definitely different this year. Health and safety, I think you've been real clear all along that that in order for us to make, that a lot of the topics that are underlined by our equity and racial justice. that in order for us to make, you know, that a lot of the topics that are underlined by our equity and racial justice. Uh, has to do with our ability to, um, have a strong social emotional plan. You've all talked about it and you've all talked about it from different, different factors. And so we want to make sure that this year that we have each school, um, completing and have, and publishing and having measurements for, um, with a social, uh, social emotional learning plan. And then that way we can, the social emotional, emotional plan can get to what you've talked about with, uh, mental health. You know, it'll underline the mental health needs and it'll also really understand, uh, help us understand and, um, you know, take a closer look, a closer examination of the, of the equity and racial justice issues, um, that are being raised. Um, this is the first year that you've had another goal in operations. Um, I believe that we're in for, um, Rosalyn and I, you know, meet weekly in a, in a meeting. And one of the things, uh, you didn't talk about that with Charlie, but I think we talked with Charlie about it. Uh, and you saw that all of the, of so many of those things on that legislative agenda are going to impact our bottom line budget. And so I think that our goal this year, our priority goal is that we've got to keep our annual percentage of fund balance maintained. That's the only way we can make sure, you know, that we, that we stay in business and that, you know, that's my bottom line. And so I recommend that we really just hold it to that one measurement and that we look at fund balance. And again, it doesn't mean that we won't look at all those other factors that have to do with budget, but your ability to maintain a healthy fund balance. Um, is key to us moving forward. So that's the five, and that's the five priority benchmarks.
Thank you, Superintendent, and thank you for your, your brief but thorough, um, explanation. And thanks to all the staff that put in lots of time and energy and commitment to get these put forward for us. Uh, so just as a recap to just in synthesize it, um, in the first goal, which is academic excellence, the staff is recommending, um, the math component throughout. There isn't, it shows up in multiple places, but more just one that really emphasizes math and taking that to the next level. In the second one, in partnerships, it's the one, um, the community-based youth organizations in formal partnership with schools or the school district. Early learning is the, um, the number of students being served in preschool programs. And health and safety, it's the, um, social emotional learning plans for every school. And in operational, it's the annual percentage of fund balance maintained. So I will open it up to the group for conversation. Um, Director Leon, do you have comments? On these or recommendations of your own?
Sure, thanks. So those, um, all very good recommendations. In the past, it never had more than, um, per, uh, per goal. It's, are we trying to keep it to just one? Cause there, there may be a place or an argument for having two at times. Can I get historical feedback on that before I give my comments?
Yeah. So in the past, we've, uh, actually, when we, when we first started these benchmarks, we, um, we tried to report them all publicly and spend time. And, uh, previous boards found that it was, uh, they wanted to go deeper into those. So there's not a hardcore, uh, policy that limits you to one per, um, per goal. Um, but as you've seen with your, uh, busy schedules, it oftentimes becomes difficult to dive deep into several different benchmarks in a monitoring report. And so the boards of, and, uh, throughout the, since 2012 have started to fine tune their process to say, well, we still want to see the data. The data will be available 24/7 available to families in the community and the website. Uh, but we want to, uh, to have a, a conversation with the staff on not only the data, but what are the action steps? And what are the next steps and what decisions were? Um, and so that's why they landed on there. So you start to do the math. We, this year we added a new goal. So in the past, we only had four goals, two meetings, if you will, per goal or per, four is eight. I can see why we're focusing in on math. Now we have five goals. Uh, that's really 10 meetings that we would spend, uh, throughout the year. Uh, an active amount of time diving deep into that. So, uh, that's where we tried to balance that out with one per goal, knowing that we were adding a fifth goal.
So having that background, I think, uh, I would, I'm just going to talk about my differences, maybe I would agree with the other ones. I'm just going to talk about where I might differ and, uh, and why. So I think for the partnerships, while our partnerships are important by knowing the number of other organizations. And growing that number of organizations that support our kids. I think the, uh, our, one of our other benchmarks is engage families and parents. And I think that the, really just that's the first, that's the part that wraps around a kid's life way more than organizations is, is the family. Slash parents, wherever the, whoever that, uh, family is. And I would, um, I feel like that would be probably a, uh, more important priority to have amongst, amongst all of them. So how that would be measured, I think in the past, and we're not going to get into the details of how to measure that now, but in the past, it's been, um, number of families participating in the school climate survey. While that is a measurement, I wonder if there's a more meaningful way to measure parent involvement. And I don't have an answer for that right now. So that's one, uh, place where I might differ slightly. I'd like to hear the other directors', um, thoughts on there. And the other one would be, um, in health and safety. Um, while I think, yes, social emotional learning is important. I think that's where I'd like to argue for two, uh, in there. I know that we've had, uh, the number of students participating in the, um, health youth survey as one of our measurements. Number, percent of students participating, I think is, is, um, good to track, but what do we do with that information? And of course, what, uh, something that I'm, I think we're all concerned about, and I've heard you mention before is mental health. And one of the questions that's drilled further down in that survey is, um, mental health, depression, uh, feelings of hurting selves. And then the other part that, that may be hard to measure that specific one, and that may be too detailed, but I think, um, there's a question there about safety in school and bullying. While we don't have a lot of control over safety with regard to what, you know, all the things that revolve around someone's depression. Cause they come from all places in their life. Substance abuse can come from other places, drug abuse from other places. Bullying in schools is something we have probably a good way to try to control. And, and that bullying actually leads to, uh, so many of these other issues. It can be a root cause for depression and substance abuse. So I'd say a way to try to incorporate, uh, the healthy youth survey, more specifically the bullying question. And that's maybe a little more too detailed for this meeting today.
So Director Leon, just to, just to clarify and make sure I understand what you're saying. You're, you're saying that the social emotional learning, if I heard you correctly, the social emotional learning plan is a good, strong one. And you'd like to add a second one that ha, that has to do with, and I'm, I'm trying to find, it has to do with the youth, health, healthy youth survey. But a specific question that gets at bullying? Is that what you're?
Yeah. Yeah, that's a good idea.
Process wise, process wise, you've already adopted the benchmarks. And so you, uh, you would, uh, in that specific situation, your benchmark would be, um, percentages of students, uh, students completing the climate survey would be the, the actual benchmark that we would bring there. Now, that doesn't mean that we can't dive deeper into the climate survey data and what are the actions in there? But you wouldn't be adopting a specific question to be focused in on. That's, that's in, uh, in there. So it would be the action steps of how do we get more people to learn from that? What are we learning from the survey and those things? So just as a process level, you've technically already adopted your benchmarks. Now you're selecting which of these benchmarks is the priority. And then as Director Leon's articulating, there, there's numerous ways to then spend detailed time within one of those specific benchmarks.
So, so Dr. Leon, are you, is, is your suggestion for the, um, it's the, it's under the percent of students completing the healthy youth survey? And then analyzing result?
Yeah. So in that number of percentage of kids, uh, participating in that survey, I think it's important for the public that's listening to, to know. What do we do with this and how do we make changes? And what Dr. Garcia said, uh, as we drill down, try to understand. What our percent of kids being bullied are compared to the national standard and what we're doing to improve that and, um, and how we're, how we're measuring that. So, uh, I'm arguing for two.
Okay.
All right. And it would really be great if we could keep to, you know, to one so that we don't have to go over more than those 10 monitoring reports. Now, the thing about, uh, the healthy youth sur, her, healthy youth survey is we try to give progression of, you know, you could actually get some of the progression of what's going on in there. Because we actually, you know, that's one that we can't get the data, you know, we, we're not in control when the data comes in. I mean, it's, it's when the survey sent out. So just to let you know that.
Right. I understand we're trying to limit, but I feel strongly about this. So I'm advocating for.
Oh, yeah, I appreciate that, Dr. Leon. So as a clarifying, clarifying, can I ask one clarifying question about the youth survey? Cause I've never, I haven't been on one. I've experienced it. So when does that happen? Is it once a year? Is it, um, when, when?
Once every two years.
Oh, once every two years?
Yep.
So is this the year it's supposed to be or was it last year?
It's on odd numbers of years, I believe. So it's.
So the upcoming year?
Yeah.
So the upcoming year, so, so in years that's the even number of years that, that benchmark, we don't even look at it because it doesn't happen.
So it's being measured retrospectively. Also we have data from, uh, yeah, the previous years. So I think it could be measured, um, in the previous, uh, two years. And you, you may know more if it's, if there's some of it's being done. So it's been, it's done in sixth grade, eighth grade, 10th and 12th. And they may be serving those kids at different times of the year or different.
So Director, to Director Bonbright's question, I, I think that it's important to notice is that, no, there wouldn't be new data every other year. It doesn't mean that there, to Director Leon's point, we could, we, there would be opportunities to, uh, talk about action steps, but there wouldn't necessarily be new data. So you would have to consider that in there, just so you wouldn't be surprised.
So, okay, Dr. Leon, and then your last one, you had one on.
Those are the only, uh, adjustments or different things that I would have.
Director Keating?
Um, so I guess, I don't know, this might address maybe Director Leon's, some of his questions. But could you, I feel like in, uh, what I'm recalling, when we talk about in, in health and safety and the schools having an SEL plan. Um, I feel like we've discussed that it's difficult to measure social emotional learning. And so could you provide, uh, maybe just, this might help our conversation. Could you provide some potential or possible, um, measurements that would go into, uh, potential, a plan?
Yes, uh, school discipline would be one or, uh, discipline rates. Uh, there is some screener data that we use through Sabers. Uh, we have been working, uh, in our Wallace pilot sites. On a, uh, SEL assessments. I would say to you that one of the challenges, and you just articulated it, Director Keating, is SEL is a continuum and it's not a destination. And, um, as we learned in our discussions last spring, I think they were, and forgive me, my time is, tracking time is very difficult for me. But you know, mental health is, is, uh, there was, um, it's something that we all work on. And so the, the challenge with SEL data is, is that it is not like a, um, there's not a benchmark that says at third grade, you should be able to do X. It's really a continued journey with that. So that's why the field continues to struggle with. I don't, let me rephrase that. I don't think the field's struggling. I think the, the field's growing with their understanding that assessment data is about where the individual is and where are they moving? Or where a cohort of kids are and where are they growing? So, um, student discipline, um, academics, uh, grades, uh, attendance. There's could be a variety of factors in there in Sabers data. Please go ahead, Scarlett.
I was just going to say, and all, it doesn't preclude schools coming, from coming up, you know, and, and getting some assistance, you know, you don't want, but they, it doesn't keep them from keep coming up with surveys. Also about, you know, how are you feeling? Um, you know, uh, are you being bullied? You know, some different surveys where you can get, uh, you know, a pulse of kids along the way. It doesn't have to be, you know, you, you hate to say, uh, we, you know, you don't want to say that once every two years we do a survey to see how you're doing. Because, you know, we're going to need it more than that. So if I, I know if I was a principal, I'd be doing some kind of dipstick questions along the way. So that I could get a feel about, you know, what did you learn from, um, the lessons about perseverance and about goal setting and about empathy for others? You know, and try and getting and, uh, using that data to guide the development of the plan and, um, refinement of the plan.
Schools use their culture and climate survey, just as another one. And then when they have the healthy youth survey, they use that. And so the idea there was is that each school would build a plan. What is their measurable data? Where are the areas they are focusing in on to achieve that? And so how do you report that out and get deeper? Uh, you, and this is, you know, new for all of us. So it'd be, uh, there's an opportunity then where we could highlight different schools, their school plans. Uh, what are the steps? How are they working? And then continue that continuous improvement cycle, if you will.
Can I, can I ask a point of clarification as well in terms of, um, this is my, my understanding is that this is the first year we went beyond, um, K five with SEL as a focus. So this is, and unfortunately, this is a very difficult school year to be having, um, the secondary schools trying to design a plan about SEL that they haven't really focused on in the past. But, um, given all that, um, I, I just want to point out that, um, for Director, uh, Keating, that in fact, this is a, I think this is still trying, that all the super, the, all the, um, principals are, are still trying to figure out. How that translation, um, of their plan is, um, demonstrated and tracked. And I think that, uh, I, when I spoke with, uh, the Deputy Superintendent Garcia earlier, he was saying that they have a template. Um, that, that helps them think through, um, you know, what, what should be in the plan and how they might be able to track it. And then I think that that all rolls up to the, to the district plan.
Yeah, just one point. Go ahead, Director Keating.
Well, what I was going to say, I'm, I'm familiar with the, um, uh, SIP plans that Bill, I've been a part of creating a, a safety improvement plan, um, at an SDM level. I think my, what I was trying to get at in my follow-up comment, um, that kind of builds on what Dr. or Director Leon, Dr. Director Leon? I mean, I think we're going to formally adopt that. Um, so I, I think when thinking about bullying, I think the, the thing that I like to do. Cause this is, this is where I've spent a significant amount of time in this district, um, addressing and working in that, this, um, realm, I guess I would call it. So bullying is a really broad term and it has, it's, it has different interpretations. Um, and when you're at, you know, I have a lot of experience at the elementary school level. And if someone's being mean, that is interpreted and the word bullying or bullying is used in such a, um, broad sweeping way. And I think that when I think about like SEL, like a plan for, uh, individual building that incorporates, like Josh was saying, um, the culture and climate, like we really, it's about fostering culture and climate, which is where it should be, I think, um, school building should be empowered to be able to foster that so that it represents the student population and the, and that, uh, the, there. But really I think it's, it's also important for the adults when we're talking about bullying to look at, to, to actually break that down. Because it's really about harassment, intimidation and bullying. And sometimes they happen singularly, um, or as an individual act. Or, you know, when it's compounded, then you become, then that's when it becomes a bullying situation or, um, you know, that it just escalates. And so I know that in the conversations I've had with adults, that, that we don't often just sort of slow it down. And really talk about what does that really mean? And how do we interpret, what is the definition of bullying that we are operating under? Um, and so I think that, you know, with an, with, um, of an SEL plan that at a building level. That that could address some of the concerns that I think I hear from Director Leon around, um, making sure that we're assessing the, the student safety, whether it's perceived safety or actual safety. And I know that we have spent, I mean, since my time joining, we've spent a significant amount of time, amount of time talking about safety and what is safety. Um, and so I, I think, um, having had the experience of, of being a part of a few different buildings that are improving their culture and climate on safety around bullying. I think that, um, an SEL plan would really, um, in my experience, would really support this benchmark. Or I guess this would be the priority benchmark. So I don't know if I articulated that last part very well.
No, I think that was really helpful. Thank you. So your thoughts on the other benchmarks? So your thoughts on the other benchmarks?
Um, I, at this point, I'm gonna pause. I don't have more to add in this moment.
Okay, so I actually did get a couple of scribbles from Director Cobb. And of course, they're very insightful as always. So I thought I'd share with you, they weren't specific to which benchmarks. They were just, and I should have actually started with this because they're kind of an overarching think, you know, think, a way to think through the conversation and what we, what we want in priority benchmarks. So from her perspective, priority benchmarks should be areas where we have the biggest gaps, areas where we need to grow the most, areas that are foundational, that that are, that fundamentally lay a foundation, early numeracy, literacy, those kinds of things, and student health and safety. So those were, I I was writing very fast, but that is what she had said. And I think everything that that has been brought forth actually by, you know, staff as well as the directors has fallen within those categories. So I think we're, we're very aligned, it seems to me. So my thoughts on this, the the, the one on academic excellence, I, I I really understand and can get the the math as a basis. I'm still not quite sure how we functionally adopt a benchmark if it's sort of a amalgam of various ones. So I'm not sure how that works. But if we use math as an element throughout, then it would probably be the the various benchmarks within the school that that align with the math knowledge. Okay, so I think that that makes sense. And I, I think, I think math, that one is fine. The partnership one, and you know, this is an interesting one because Director Leon brought up the bit about engaging families and parents, and I really, you know, kind of, that's the one, I kind of went back and forth as well. But I, I really, I think this, what COVID has shown us is a couple of things, is both of these we, you know, our relationship with families, had we had it stronger when we went into this, probably wouldn't have been such a panic. But if we hadn't had the partnerships with the community-based organizations, we would have been in a real world of hurt. And I think it's one of the reasons we're have exceptional exemplary relationships that have led to programs that, you know, among the best in the, in the state in terms of our able, ability to set up and provide services quickly to to families with our partners in collaboration. And so I'm really torn. I I do think the partnership one is maybe an easier singular focus than the families and parents we've been talking about. It's one of our goals as a board to, that's a whole category for us, is communication and and working with families and parents. And I'm wondering if that isn't something that we can start thinking through different ways to do that while still having this be our priority for this year. This is a one-year priority benchmark, correct? I think that's kind of.
Typically, typically when the benchmarks have been established.
For the five.
For the strategic plan or until the goal's met.
Until the goal's.
And a different priorities met there.
So so my question on this, and I was struck by, and I want to have a conversation with all the directors when I, when I finish my sentence about the which one of these is best in this category, because I think it is, it needs some discussion. But I I couldn't, I wasn't sure if the number of community-based youth organizations in formal partnership was the best indicator of success, especially around equity issues. I mean, I think it's maybe not the number, but it's the the type and diversity and you know, which ones include, I know that our benchmark is the one that said, just says number. But we passed this before, you know, a whole lot of things happened. And I think, I'm thinking now in terms of equity, you can have a lot of community-based organizations, but if they're all based in the same geographic region or if they're all in in topic areas that that really attract or support a certain type of of student and rather than others. I I'm just trying to figure out how the equity piece fits into that. And and if, if there's a way that within the, within that, that priority one, we can dive deeper than just the number, but also the type and the, and the impact and the student population that they're serving and all those things, which I think is what you intend, but I I got stuck by the benchmark that we passed, which is just number. And it just felt like that seemed incomplete. So I'd love some thoughts on that, and then we can have a group discussion about the partnership versus the family engagement one. So Superintendent or Deputy Superintendent, do you have thoughts on on how we might show that and when it isn't just the number?
It seems to me that a simple, a simple, not simple, nothing simple, but that if we added, you know, that we wanted to increase the number of diverse multifaceted partnerships and youth groups that interact with our youth and, you know, and even, you know, result in you know, deeper partnerships that that might get at what you're talking about. Because I agree with you that the intent of that benchmark.
It just doesn't look.
Yeah. Yeah.
And and I think this is a real, really critical place to to infuse our equity lens and really make sure that we're engaging. I mean, we have students who may not relate to or feel inspired by the current programs with the partners that we have. Maybe there's someone from from their cultural background or ethnic experience that might speak to them more that we just don't know and we haven't connected with yet. So.
So we've actually built a partner portal. And so one of the challenges will be is is to, who, do partners want to enter a formal relationship with us to ensure that? So we would then be able to, through the technology, it comes through the parent portal, or excuse me, the family portal, when they register for an ELO opportunity. And so it's not just an ELO opportunity. So, you know, we just had this conversation, the superintendent was leading us, I think it was Monday, forgive me if I'm wrong on the days, about the people that are working with childcare in there, that we could sign and have families actually register their child through an ELO activity that's matched to that daycare provider where we could look at the academic progress, the diversity of students. And we have those things. So a lot of, you know, these are building on each other. And and so the challenge that you face is, and you faced it in the spring, remember? I think there are 37 plus benchmarks and trying to narrow them down and make sure that they're measurable. To Director Leon's point earlier, you know, family engagement is still measured by people participating in the climate survey, but we know that that's not enough, which goes back to is you that priority about peeling those layers back and what is the data that's available? How do we see that in the spirit of continuous improvement, right? And so, yes, we can, with partners, if we, and that's the tough thing about partners is, you know, getting everyone to use common infrastructure to actually have shared data. But we have the technical means to provide you that data, not just with TPS programs, but with all of our partner programs. And we piloted that in the work in the Wallace work. And then to answer that question is, is part of that is bringing youth voice. So in the Wallace work, students actually are surveyed and said, what kind of activities do you want? And that's how that works. And so we have all kinds of flexibilities there.
And and also, I'm sorry. I was just gonna say that, you know, my personal work, I can serve that goal too, as we look at partners because, you know, I I believe that it it kind of goes back to your passion, all the board's passion around the listening tours. And so I'm invested in getting back out to schools when we can or, you know, bringing in some you know, some virtual conversations with our youth about, okay, so how's this affecting you? What does it look like? So again, it doesn't mean that the only thing we're gonna do is the thing written in the benchmark. You know, I can come back in a superintendent's report and talk about, you know, here, here's the youth that we've involved in. Here's how we followed up on their comments about, you know, isolation or, you know, how they're feeling about not seeing their friends. So there's, there's lots of things we can do with with that.
Okay, well, that's great. And and, you know, also is Deputy Superintendent Garcia mentioned, or maybe you did superintendent, that, you know, I'm working with JMAC at the moment on on a kind of a community-wide, county-wide program on making sure that we're all working together to serve families. And this actually, this partnership one is going to be a I think, given what we're doing as at a county level with other elected bodies and and our community partners, this could be a hugely meaningful time to actually be tracking this. So I actually like that one, and I think it's important for the timing that we're in. But again, families are also center and it's, it's just, it's hard. So I'd love to, you know, hear one more time from Director Leon and Director Keating about this particular one that's in, that's in partnerships and what you're thinking is on these two choices. I mean, there are a lot of choices, but on the ones that have been brought up.
I see you pointing at me.
Yes, you were.
Really, I think it is really difficult to, because like, family engagement, like right now, like if I'm thinking of this immediate moment, family engagement is is so important because of just the circumstances we're in. And and additionally, the partnerships that we have have been the ones that have helped actually support a lot of these gaps and these needs that our families are facing. So I feel like it's, it's, they're, they're intertwined rather than being there, well, there's a lot of overlapping, I guess, is what I'm trying to say. So I do, I I find it difficult to choose. And yet I think about the food insecurity and transportation and connectivity and access to I mean, e- even like just basic essentials, you know, rental assistance and the ways that we can, the the district can leverage the partnerships, whether that's with the city, whether that's with, you know, the Wallace Foundation or GTCF or the Urban League. I I guess I, I'm, my sense, my instincts are that the partnerships would allow, like having that as the the benchmark or the priority would be, would also feed into the family engagement. Because I know Amanda Scott Thomas is working miracles behind, behind the scenes. And so I got, I I just, I, it's hard because I feel like it's the chicken and the egg. And so for me, I think that the partnerships would be would take just a, not a bigger, I don't know, I I'm leaning towards the partnerships, I guess, is what I'm trying to somewhat articulate.
Thank you, Director Leon. Did you have, I I see that Deputy Superintendent Garcia has his hand up. I don't, do you want, do you want to go first?
Wait if he wants to come.
I just want to continue to emphasize one of the comments Superintendent made is, is there is no wrong answer in this. All of our schools have a parent engagement plan that they work through. There's, it's not one department. What makes this district and this community so great is is we all try to roll in our sleeves up. And so just say hypothetically, you decided you wanted to focus in on family engagement. I I rest assured is, we're not going to quit on the partnership piece. It's in part of our DNA. And if you want to focus in on the partnership and and really remember that this is your opportunity to deeper, do a deeper analysis on those things. We're still gonna focus in on parent engagement. Our schools still do that. They have a piece of that plan. And so I just want to give you once again permission as a superintendent to start to articulate is, there is no wrong answer in here. The question is, is which one do you want to spend some more time diving deeper in the analysis? And to to see. They're all gonna have to keep on working on.
Okay, Dr. Director Leon?
Yeah, so I think it's important for the public to realize, right, choose one of these, we're not saying goodbye to the other ones at all, right? We're still working on those. So it feels that way sometimes. Oh, put all my chickens in one basket or my eggs in one basket, whichever, chickens and eggs, they go together sometimes. So I, I see the interconnection between these two. Yeah, we all, we all do, it's there. So I wonder, as Deputy Superintendent said, these partner organizations, you know, as we start to quote unquote, speak the same language or have the same software, you know, ability to share data together in an easier way that we can find out how involved our parents are with our partners, how to help our kids. Then maybe we can get to the same, you know, answer and answer being improvement in in support around our, for our kids. Then maybe we analyze, look for improvements in in how our partners connect with our parents. Maybe that's part of the answer. So there we go.
Yeah, that's a good suggestion. Okay, well, we're gonna make a proposal here. We have to, we can't obviously adopt anything tonight anyway, so because it's not a business meeting. And I propose that we put this till the November 12th business meeting, which gives us a little bit more time to talk amongst ourselves about this. But mainly because then we'll have our new board member on. And that'll be the their, his or her first meeting. And so it'll give an opportunity for the the new board member to be party to the passage of the priorities and benchmarks and really understand, you know, what we're diving into. Does that make some sense to to everybody? And it gives us a little time to, you know, work through this and include Andrea and Director Cobb as well, who couldn't be here tonight. So unless, unless for some reason the superintendent or this deputy superintendent, you guys think that we need to do this by the 22nd, which is next week?
No, no, that's, it's good. We're working on it.
And it sounds like, just for clarification, there's enough synergy there. And we can double back with you as individuals to get some clarity, but there seems to be some synergy around most of them. And so we'll try to capture that synergy. And then then maybe we can continue to focus in on the areas that there seems to be maybe some further discussion.
Yeah, yeah, I think we're very close. It sounded to me like by the end of the conversation, it sounded like we were all pretty aligned. So I think that's fabulous. And so we'll have some, we'll move forward and and so for Tracy and to think, to track this, we're gonna try and put this discussion on the November 12th business meeting for a vote. And between now and then, we will, you know, try and bring everybody on board and make sure we have a clear understanding of where we're going. Okay, so that, that is it for tonight's agenda. Does anyone have anything to share for the good of the order or any last comments about this before we adjourn? So our next meeting is next Thursday, October 22nd. It will be a board business meeting. And so we will, I guess, see each other then. And thank you, everyone, and thanks to the staff and to Charlie Brown and everyone who came tonight to to educate us and give us some really very tangible and timely issues to discuss. And we're, I appreciated everybody's input. All right, we are, we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.